Testing, test.
Thanks.
Okay, everybody, okay, we're gonna be starting in a minute. Okay, again, no food and no drinks. Okay, applicants, what you're gonna do when your case is called, you're going to go to that middle section there in the front row. Opponents, when your case is called, you are going to the front row to the east of them or to their right. Anyone asking for a continuance? You can come down to this first aisle right here by Victor. You can come down to this first aisle. Again, if someone's asking for a continuance, everyone take note in cases it might be your case.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the July 19, 2024 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez and I am the Chairman of the ZBA. Today is an exciting day. As you can see, we have five members back on the board. As most of you probably know, two new commissioners were appointed this week. First, we have Commissioner Swathy Staley, who's on my end here to my left. She was appointed this week. Welcome, Swathy. We also have Helen Schiller, who is not here today, but we'll look forward to greeting her at next month's meeting. In her place, we have alternate Commissioner Ann McDonald to my right here. Welcome, Ann. And finally, I do want to say a thank you to former Commissioner Zurich Esposito, whose term expired after last month's meeting. It was a pleasure having Zurich on this board, and we thank him for his service. With that, I would like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I hereby designate alternate member Ann McDonald to take Helen Schiller's place as a regular member at today's meeting. Next, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Soto.
Here.
Commissioner Staley. Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of June's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes. The minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now we will take continuances and withdrawals.
Good morning, Chairman. Nick Fatikas, for the record. I'm here on page three. Items 27724S and 27824Z, 12701 South Halsted Street. We are still working on a few planned corrections or suggestions made by the department. We also just got contacted by the Alderman's Office to participate in the community review process. So if we could have a two-month continuance, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, this is calendar numbers 27724S and 27824Z. Will be continued to September 20th, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Rolando Acosta, here on behalf of the applicant for item 28124Z, on top of page four. Client could not get in here this morning, so I am requesting a continuance.
Okay. Calendar number 28124Z will be continued to September 20th, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kimena Castro. I'd like to continue matter 282 on page four. We are hoping to get a continuance potentially. I don't know if you guys are doing anything next month. We are, you know, we've been working with the neighbors. I know the chairman is probably privy to some communication going on with the neighbors. We're happy to keep continuing working with them. However, my client is unable to be here today.
Okay. Calendar number 28224Z will be continued to September 20th, the 2:00 p.m. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? Seeing none, Victor, please call the first case. If you could sit on this end over here, close to the court reporter.
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Dirk Maloney. Address 1326 West Chestnut, Unit 1.
And could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Daniela Fitzgerald. Fitzgerald Architecture, Planning, Design, 125 North Halsted, Chicago.
Okay. Could both of you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Maloney, let us know what brings you here today.
So I'm in the midst of planning a roof deck project for the top of my building's garage. And there's two variances that I'm bringing to the table as part of that project. One is to reduce the rear yard setback for the access bridge, and the other is to reassign the rear yard to the top of the roof deck as part of that variance. When my wife and I bought the unit, we didn't realize that the building was built in 2015. We bought in 2020. We didn't realize that the building was built outside of what plans originally had intended. So the building was longer and the rear yard was smaller than what's in the zone, what's required. So we wanted to, as part of this project, reassign some of that to what would become the top of the garage. And then because, like many buildings in Chicago, it's about four feet, the ground is about four feet below grade. So then, to build a staircase that was within code, my lot isn't quite wide enough in order to allow for that. And so on, yeah. So we wanted to, part of, one of the variances is to enable an access bridge that wouldn't...
Require the stair.
Yeah, wouldn't require the stair.
Okay. This might be a question for the architect. Was the original building built into the rear yard setback?
We found when we, we asked for an updated survey when we were preparing our documents. And when we received that updated survey, we realized that the original permit drawings and the actual conditions differed. So when the building was built, they built it, as Dirk said, just a little bit longer and the garage a little bit larger than what was shown on the permit drawings. That's why the rear yard open space is not quite compliant.
Okay. And is that what is necessitating the variations?
Twofold. The one issue is that because alley grade and rear yard grade differ by about three feet, seven inches, in order to do a stair, which we would be allowed to be done by right, that stair would end up being wider than the lot width. So we're not able to do that. Additionally, we have this smaller-than-required rear yard open space. So by doing an access bridge from the first floor landing, we're able to have access without a stair and we're able to alleviate some of the rear yard open space issues as well.
Any questions from the board? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Okay, good morning. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Paul Missurick, 5140 North McVicker, Chicago.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, what brings you here today?
So I am undertaking a renovation of a family home, which I am planning to move into. During the renovation, there were some unforeseen circumstances and caused us to pivot from the original prints, which did not require variations or any kind of administrative adjustments. As we were renovating the building, we saw that the exterior, basically, nothing was up to code. The wood, the framing, was two-by-fours instead of two-by-sixes. So in essence, we had to rebuild the entire house from the first floor up. And the proposed set or the proposed variations are due to setbacks because the house was built in location over 100 years ago that it's just kind of in a place where I'm in the position where I have to do this.
So, and if I understand this correctly, are you just basically rebuilding the house in the same place that it was?
Yeah, there is just an issue with an overhang in the front and back. I'm still building it on top of the old foundation. However, the issue was is that in order to keep that foundation still sturdy and structurally secure, we needed to do a little bit of an overhang to distribute the weight on the backside and in the front side of the house because both of those actually collapsed when we were remodeling during the middle of winter. So like we, we had to like just continue to work and get this covered up at the very least to preserve the first floor because we're keeping those first floor two-by-twelves in because they're really solid.
Sure, okay. And I see you've got here, you've, have you spoken with Alderman Gardner?
Yeah.
Okay, because we do have, just for the record, we've got a letter of support from him. Any, any conversations with your neighbors?
Yeah, so both of my neighbors, I know for a very long time. My grandmother owned the house for 35 years prior to that. I was actually born in that house, so... So like, yeah, the plan was just to like remodel it and rent it. And then when this happened to us, we were like, man, now we're gonna, we're a huge undertaking. And we decided to actually stay in Illinois and not move out and, and just stay in this house and just, you know, reenact my childhood, I guess. Just how funny how things end up like that.
All right. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rolando Acosta, here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me is the applicant David Zaghar and Kimberly Dahl, the architect for the project. This involves an existing property. It has two existing buildings on it. It has a front two-story building that is a two-unit graystone. It has a rear coach house that is also two units. The applicant and his wife purchased the property. They reside on the property with one of the units in the front building with their family and to do so. They need to, the coach house, which has two units and is a legal non-conforming coach house in terms of FAR and setbacks, has a front addition that is wood. It's shown in the, in the images. That is in bad state. It needs to be rebuilt. They plan to remodel the coach house into one unit, so it's a deconversion, lowering of the density. But once they demolish that front addition, which is how you get to the second floor, they cannot rebuild it without these variations because they lose the grandfathering during the term that it's out of place. It is being rebuilt in the same location. It's actually going to be smaller. It's a required access to the second floor of this property. So to enable that, they were requesting two variations. One is to allow an increase above the existing FAR by 9.9% so that they can build the stair. And similarly, a reduction in the rear yard setback as well as a side yard setback to make essentially the coach house conforming and be able to rebuild this rear stair. They have talked to their neighbors who they, you know, from living there, and there are no issues with them.
Great, yeah, if you just want to have them swear to their affidavits and we'll see if there's questions.
Okay. David, please state your name and address for the record.
It's David Zaghar, 888 North Sacramento Boulevard.
And I previously prepared an affidavit on your behalf, which you reviewed and signed. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Kimberly, state your name and address for the record, please.
Kimberly Dahl, 4422 North Seeley Ave., Number 2, Chicago, Illinois 60625.
And you are the project architect for this project?
Yes.
And I prepared an affidavit on your behalf that you reviewed and executed as accurate. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you or the board may have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed.
Chairman, notice I did not raise my hand like last time.
I did, yes. For the record, Counselor did not raise her right hand. She's an attorney. She needed to do so.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kimena Castro. I am a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger. With me today is the manager of the applicant and his architect for the project located at 3639 South Michigan. Zach, could you please state your name and business address for the record?
Zachary Daniels, 3856 Oakton Street, Skokie, Illinois.
Thank you very much. And Angel, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Angel Seda, Red Architects, 2123 North Damon.
Great.
Okay, if you want to just give us a brief overview and then have your witnesses swear to their affidavits.
Thank you, Chairman. The property is located in RM5 zoning district. It's an ETOD location to the 35th Street, Bronzeville ITTT Green Line CT entrance. It is a vacant orange-rated building, three stories tall and two stories tall. And it has no parking. The previous use of this building is an office and the applicant is looking to convert the building from office to residential use to allow nine dwelling units. And in doing so, would like to construct a third floor addition and a three-story addition in the rear of the building. We are proposing nine bicycle spaces and zero cars as this is an ETOD location. And the existing building sits on the north property line with a side, side setback of zero, sits virtually in the south property line with a side setback of .22 feet. And we are looking to, as I mentioned, do the third floor addition that will follow the existing wall lines and then the three-story addition that will actually provide setbacks. But those don't count since the most restrictive setbacks are the ones that take, that are considered by the zoning examiners. And we're also looking to reduce the rear setback to 7.92 feet and also reduce the rear yard open space to zero feet as the rear three-floor addition, three-story addition will prohibit parking and rear yard open space and the hardships. And also, we're looking to reduce parking, as I mentioned. This is an ETOD location. The hardships in this case is the existing conditions due to being an orange-rated building, the existing setbacks. And if we were to comply with the, with the guidelines, we would be reducing or eliminating the three-story addition and the rear, reducing unit count as well. And including a fourth floor on this building would completely alter the orange-rated facade. So we're looking for your favorable consideration for these three variations. We also have been engaging with the Alderman's Office for over a year to talk about different ways to get this project done. And we're very happy to have her positive support recommendation today, which I believe the chairman and the ZBA members have.
We do have that letter in the record. You can go ahead and have your witnesses swear to their affidavits now.
Thank you very much. Zach, we've, we submitted documents on your behalf to the ZBA board. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit and the documents provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Angel, you're a project architect for this matter?
Yes.
Yes. And we submitted an affidavit and documents on your behalf to the board. If you were to testify today, if I were to ask you questions, would your testimony be consistent with the materials provided to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Would both the applicant and your expert please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for calendar number 27524S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Okay, first for the applicant, could you state your name and address, please?
Leona Stokes, 7251 South Ashton Avenue, 60636.
Okay. And you're here to open up a hair salon?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience in the hair salon business?
Yes, I've been in the business for 21 years. This is my third salon. The first two buildings that I was in, I didn't own them. So they both lost the buildings and, under foreclosure, and I was kicked out. So now I purchased a building and I own it myself, so that won't happen. I'm trying to open up the salon there.
Great. And how many employees do you intend on having?
Eight.
Okay. And so I assume you've been in this for 21 years. You're a licensed cosmetologist?
Yes.
Okay. And for the employees that'll be cutting hair, they'll also be licensed?
Yes.
Okay. And then the hours that you intend on keeping?
9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Is that seven days a week?
No, we'll be closed Sunday and Monday.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? And Mr. Musawir, the board recognizes your expertise. You did prepare an affidavit in this matter. Is that true?
Yes, sir, I did.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with that affidavit, true?
True.
All right. Seeing no questions, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, Counselor Augustin, you can proceed.
All right, thank you. For the record, Fred Augustin, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Joseph Buchlo. The property, the property that we're talking about is 1506 North Cleveland. It's currently improved with a four-story residential building containing three units, three condominium units, a rear three-story exterior stairway and a three-car garage. The applicant owns a condominium unit within the building. He acquired the unit back in August 1st, 2022. Prior to acquiring the unit, the previous owner of this condo had drawings and designs prepared to incorporate a rooftop deck on the garage. The plan called for an open bridge connection between the rear stairway and the rooftop deck. The previous owner was ready to install these improvements, but he did not proceed because he had essentially relocate from the state for a job. So as a result, he listed the condominium unit for sale. The applicant acquired the unit. At the time he was acquiring the unit, the seller did convey to the applicant that these drawings that showed a rooftop deck and a bridge connecting the stairway to the deck was essentially ready to be built. So after closing, applicant went ahead, hired a general contractor to start the installation. And the contractor did install portions of the deck and the bridge. The applicant then hired a different architecture firm to design a pergola for the deck. And after research, the architect realized the building permit was never issued for this deck and bridge. So once the applicant found out, he immediately halted construction and he started to obtain a building permit to correct the issue, which brings us to the board this morning. The open bridge connection measures around 2.5 feet by 3.7 feet. And in order to establish this bridge, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback from the required 37.08 feet to 21 feet. Here with me this morning is the applicant, Joseph Buchlo, and our project architect, Alfredo Aguilera. And just Mr. Chairman, if I could explain, our hardship here is a subject property. It's a short lot. It's only 123 feet deep, which is shorter than a standard city lot. And so given the short lot, there's not much open space at the rear. So if you had to essentially design an access stair from grade to the garage rooftop deck, you would essentially have two stairways at the rear. The proposed stairway, the second stairway that would provide the access to the deck, would occupy a majority of the remaining open space. So thus, there wouldn't be much open space left over for the building to enjoy. So in order to preserve this area, the more efficient way is to have one set of stairway, which is existing, and a bridge connecting that stairway to the proposed rooftop deck. So that it's the more efficient way to provide.
Could the excess stair from the ground been done as of right?
No, let me leave that to the architect. You know, probably not because...
Well, let's ask that for the architect. Could the excess stair from the ground been done as of right?
No, it hasn't been done.
No, no, could it have been done without needing a variation?
No.
No? Okay. It would still need a variation for the rear setback?
It is encroaching into the open rear yard.
It would probably reduce, we'd have to probably seek a variation to reduce the rear yard open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
With that, if I could call my first witness. Mr. Buchlo, please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Buchlo, 1506 North Cleveland Avenue, Unit 1, Chicago, Illinois 60610.
And you are the owner of the first-floor condominium unit at the property, is that correct?
Yep.
Just briefly, the property is improved with a four-story building, three units, as well as a three-story stairway and a garage at the rear, is that correct?
Yes.
And the previous owner actually began the process of establishing this rooftop deck, in fact, because he prepared drawings, is that correct?
Right, yes.
But of course, as I stated, he never proceeded with those drawings, is that right? Correct?
Correct, yes. Yes.
So. So after you acquired it, you acquired the unit, you did hire a general contractor. He began construction on portions of the deck and he constructed the bridge, is that right?
Yes.
It was only then when you hired the architect to design a pergola, he discovered that a building permit was never issued for the drawings, is that correct?
Correct.
Let me jump in. Who was the general contractor that you hired?
For the...
For the, for the bridge connection?
I hired a metal worker for the, myself, for the, the bridge connection.
You hired what?
I hired the...
Who was the general contractor you hired to install the deck and the bridge?
Yeah, I hired the, it was a metal company out of Indiana that installed the bridge.
A metal company?
Like a steel working company.
What was the name of it?
I'd have, I'd have to look it up. I don't have that with me.
But just to elaborate on that, that company, when they started installation, they never informed you that you needed a building permit?
No, no, no. I thought everything was ready to go.
Okay. So you didn't, did you ask them whether they had pulled any permits to do the work?
I didn't ask them. When I talked to the original builder, he said everything was set and they'd built it deliberately to connect from the stairwell to the, you know, exact roof level as it was and that that was all ready to go. So I assumed wrongly that that was permitted and I just had to hire the person to do it and pay. And then nobody said, when they were installing it, it wasn't until I met Alfredo afterwards, sorry, that he said, "Let's go back and see what was done here or not."
For all of the applicants in this room, it is, it's never a good idea to assume that your contractor is doing what he should be doing. You should ask to see the permits to make sure they've been pulled because it's always better to come in and ask for the relief before the work is done than after.
Understood. Lesson learned.
If I could ask a couple more questions?
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, you're never cited by the city of Chicago for this bridge, is that correct? And so you're, so essentially by coming here, you are proactively correcting the problem, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you execute, we execute an affidavit on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Second witness, Mr. Aguilera, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alfredo Aguilera and I live on 163 East South Benton Street on Palatine, Illinois 60067.
And you were originally hired to design a pergola for the applicant's rooftop deck, is that correct?
Yes.
And as we stated, based on your research, you realized a permit was never issued for the drawings for the rooftop deck and the open bridge, is that correct?
Yes.
So as a result, the applicant halted construction and he immediately hired you to help attain this building permit, is that correct?
Yes.
Subject property is unique in that it's only 123 feet deep, is that correct?
Yes.
Which is shorter than a standard city lot, that's 125 feet deep, is that right?
That is correct.
And this standard condition posted hardship essentially could pose a hardship when establishing access to the rooftop deck, is that correct?
That is correct.
Essentially, what would happen is without the bridge, the applicant would have to establish a separate stairway access from grade, isn't that right?
Yes.
And currently, there's only a small portion of open area in the rear because of it's a short lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if we had to establish a separate stairway access from grade, we would essentially have two stairways at the rear, is that right?
Yes.
And the stairway access to the rooftop deck would occupy a good portion of the open area in the rear, is that right?
Yes.
Which wouldn't leave much open space for the building, isn't that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So in order to maintain the open area at the rear, the more efficient way is to have one set of stairs, is that right?
Yes.
And then there would be an open bridge connecting the existing stairway to the rooftop deck, is that correct?
That is correct.
You executed an affidavit that we, that we submitted on the board on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of our witnesses. We're here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, Counselor, you can proceed.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record again, good morning. My name is Huma Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger. I am here today with two of the applicants. One of them will be testifying, the other one is here for moral support and we have the architect as well. So next to me is Andrew Phillips, who is owner of the property and applicant and then his partner TJ next to him as well. Andrew, can you please state your name and address for the record?
1463 West Gregory, Chicago, Illinois 60640.
And then TJ, I know you're not planning on testifying, but perhaps the chairman would like for you to state your name?
Yeah, if you want to just put it into the record, speak into that microphone, the... Oh.
Ted Juha, 1463 West Gregory as well.
Thank you. And then Danny, could you please state your full name and your business address for the record?
Yes, Redu Alexa at 4747 West Peterson Avenue, Chicago.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if you want to give us a brief overview?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is an RS3 zoned lot in an ADU North District. There is a two-story building improved on the lot with three dwelling units and two surface parking spaces in the rear. Andrew and TJ propose to build a two-car garage with an ADU on the second floor. And there needs, there will be stairs to access the ADU on the second floor that are higher than six feet. The stairs to access the ADU are not a permitted encroachment on any setback. And we are proposing in order to access the ADU, since we cannot levitate up to the second floor, to reduce the west side setback, the east side setback and the combined setbacks and also the rear setbacks. And we are also asking to reduce the rear yard open space as the proposed stairs encroaches onto the diameter of the required rear yard set, rear yard open space. The existing hardships in this case are the existing conditions of parking spaces as we cannot take parking spaces away to locate the ADU on the ground level. Otherwise, it would burden the existing units. Also, the property is located in an ADU district and ADUs are permitted. And also, the hardship as well is that we need to access ADU on the second floor, which is also permitted and it would be over six feet. We need a stair over six feet. We have engaged with both adjacent neighbors. They are, they've been very happy with Andrew and TJ. We have text messages of support. And we also spoke with the Alderwoman and her staff. And they're, you know, they have no opposition. And we are, you know, looking forward to a favorable consideration from you all.
Can you tell me, what was the, if you know this, the ordinance with regard to the ADUs, how did they contemplate that the stairs would be set up for an ADU?
I'm not sure. You know, I think I've actually spoken to this with the Alderwoman's staff and also other Alderpeople about potentially in the future, including the stairs as a permitted encroachment, just to sort of alleviate and make this more equitable for people seeking an ADU and not having to seek a reduction in setbacks or rear yard open space.
Let me ask another question. Can the stairs, and this might be for the architect, are you the architect or the... Okay. Can the stairs be put inside the garage? Would they fit?
So the stairs, if they would be placed on the inside of the garage, they would reduce the footprint of the building up on the second floor. So for that reason, we kept it outside and put it towards the back of the building.
All right, but could you still have, you got two parking spaces in that garage, right? Could you still fit the stairs in there?
Yes, there would be access. But like I had mentioned, it reduces the footprint up on the second floor and the ADU unit's already pretty small to begin with. Excuse me?
By how much would you estimate it reduced?
Like three foot six if we were to go with the minimum stair dimension allowed by code. I'm not sure if the plans can be put up, but... It's a little bit tough to see, but we have the living room and the bedroom up there. So it's, yeah, it would limit the layout that we have proposed.
And you said it would limit it by how much?
It's three and a half and close to four feet, taking into account the wall thickness.
Cut into the kitchen, as you can see. Everything would need to be reconfigured.
Not a great experience. We think more importantly would also just be an awkward, not high-quality layout. And so that's why we think it should be outside.
But then not be as desirable from a renter and therefore wouldn't be as comfortable?
I think that's part of it, but also just, you know, we want to create a high-quality, you know, place for someone to live. That's important to us.
The lot is, is it regular size or is it substandard? It's, it's a little bit over, so it's 30 by 125. The issue here is more the height of the existing ADU and providing access, which is over six feet from the ground level. So the stairs need to be higher to reach the front door. The ADU's already been... No. Right now, it's a current slab and we're looking to build a garage with an ADU on the second floor, which is permitted. But the question is the access. Yes. So the stairs would be located outside in order to provide high-quality layouts on the inside of the ADU unit. And the hardship, the question here is the height of the stairs to reach that front door for the ADU. And the stairs are not a permitted encroachment. So. Why does it have to be that high? Uh, just be, just...
Supposed to turn green? There we go. Yeah, so we, we can remove the parking that has to be on the first floor. So this is a second floor unit and that's why we need the stairs up there to access the unit.
But I guess the question was, why does it have to be so high?
Well, yeah, the minimum for the, we wouldn't be able to reduce. So the code is six-foot, six-foot high. If it's less than six feet, then you're allowed to. But there's no way we can, yeah. Minimum, it would have to be like nine feet.
So you're basically trying to balance the requirement for the garage, the requirement for the ADU?
Exactly.
Correct. Did you evaluate whether there's another way to do it? You said you could put the stair in the garage, but then you would diminish the... The square footage. The ADU and the... Yeah.
Yeah, the layouts wouldn't work as nicely because we'd have to reduce the width, yeah.
Can we get the mic?
It doesn't work now. Sorry to interfere. I just wanted to make an observation for you. So this, if this stair was headed to a roof deck, it would be permitted. It's only because, because it's headed to an ADU. So there's an exception in the code allowing such a stair because it's parallel to the garage wall and it's not wider than four feet to access a roof deck.
So it's like a Hopkins stair?
It's a Hopkins stair. Exactly correct. And, but when they wrote the ADU ordinance, although they exempted the ADUs from the FAR and the parking and all the kinds of things, they forgot to think about that the stair may have to be outside, particularly if you have a garage, because you have an 18-foot garage and now I have another four-foot stair. If I put it inside, your garage starts to get too large. And that we have an exception in the code. So it's kind of a quirk in the code, maybe someday they'll fix it, but we're...
Yeah, I actually, I've actually been talking to the Alderwoman in this ward and Alderman Lasbada, who is very supportive of the ADU, to think if there's any... to think if there's any sort of language that could be written in the code to make this a more equitable process so that the ADUs become more expensive than it already is.
And in a six-foot tall garage, would only, only I could park there. Nobody taller than me could get there.
I could park there too. All right. Okay, I, I get, I get this. Do you want to have your witnesses swear to their affidavits?
Andrew, we provided materials and an affidavit to the board on your behalf. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the materials provided to the board?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. And then Radu, we provided materials and an affidavit on your behalf to the board. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the materials provided to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Exchange 28324Z, 5353 North Normandy.
When you speak, speak closer to the microphone.
Sorry, okay. Sorry, thanks.
Okay, sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Gavin DeKasher at 5353 North Normandy.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. What brings you here today?
I'm seeking a variation to variance for to change the south side setback from 4.98 feet to 1.58 feet to essentially make an addition to my current second floor. Just to enlarge my sons and my guest room.
Okay. And why do you need this variation?
We would like to keep this home as our family residence. And we would like to have it grow with us because I have two children. They're growing. And we want to stay in our neighborhood and kind of make it look like some of the other houses that have been built. Because we got one of the older farmhouse, like I think this is the original farmhouse that was there on Higgins. I still have the original water pump.
And it looks like the lot that you're in is a, is a, a different shape.
Yes. Yes, which is why we like it's a unique lot. We are able to have our house and our garage next to each other, which is unique. Allows for a lot of play area for our children. And honestly, I haven't seen, I haven't seen many lots like this. So we want to keep within Chicago. And if we can expand this house, that's exactly what we'd like to do. We want to stay here and, you know, represent the neighborhood and continue to improve it.
And are you keeping the original walls of the house and then adding on to them? Are you trying to keep as much of the original structure as possible?
Essentially, what's going to happen is if you, in the photos, on the face of the house, when you go look at the second floor, it's setback. We just want to pull that second floor forward and make it flush with the front of the home.
You're not going beyond the existing?
Oh, no, no. Just needed to get my son a closet, really.
Important, you have someplace to put all the stuff.
Yeah.
You said you've been taught, you've been in conversation with your neighbors as well?
Yes, everyone is excited because we're all, we all got pretty close and they all have similar age children. And they like us to stay because they all know each other. And they've all been through it as well. So they've seen the change in the neighborhood. We had some houses constructed that have changed some of the, some of the look of the neighborhood because they're pretty big. And some of them have had the exact same buildout as us or had an addition put on. And I'd like to continue that trend and stay in, staying home.
And you mentioned it, do you know about how old the house is? 100 years?
Probably, yeah.
Good questions. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
83424F, 3220 North Cepheus.
Hey, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Yeah. Yeah, I did. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 28424S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service tattoo shop, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Grace Lash Brow LLC, DBA Grace Art and Beauty. Counselor, you can proceed.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. My name is Ali Fadai, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. To my right is the applicant, Ms. Tram Young. And further down the road is the expert business witness, Joseph Ryan.
And the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise.
Ms. Young, could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Tram Young Tae Kwon, 6030 North St. Louis, 60659.
Right.
Ms. Young is looking to establish a permanent body art makeup studio in a 1,700 square feet storefront in a mixed-use development. And she will be the tenant in there pursuant to a five-year lease. And she has been in the field for seven years and currently works a few blocks away in Lakeview in a shop where she manages the store. And she's looking to establish her own shop at the subject property. And then the hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. And she'll be serving up to 10 clients per day. And she'll also employ two technicians to accommodate her business. And then Ms. Young, you submitted an application seeking special use in May of 2024 to establish a permanent makeup and body art studio. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the application you submitted?
Yes.
My next witness is Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, could you please state your full name, qualification, and business address?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Mr. Ryan, at application, applicant's request, is it true that you visited, examined the property, and prepared a zoning consulting report dated May 16, 2024, which was submitted to, but, which was submitted along with applicant's finding of facts?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Ryan, is it true that in said report, you concluded that the proposed location complies with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And if you were to testify, or if you to continue to testify today, will you testify consistent with the findings of your report? Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
6524Z, 2624Z, 6051 North Soggin Ash.
Hey, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record again, Nick Fatikas from the Losses of Sanbanks. I'm here in behalf of the applicants, Gull Mohammed and Mohammed Musadiq. The applicants own and reside at the subject property located at 6051 North Soggin Ash. Excuse me. As you can see from the survey, the subject lot is irregularly shaped. It measures 50 feet wide at the front, approximately 125 feet in depth, but it narrows to about 36 and a half feet at the very rear. The lot is improved with a two-story, two-unit residential building at the front and a detached two-car garage at the rear. In 2022, the applicant constructed a carport on the west side of the garage. Although the carport is open on three sides, a permit was required because it's more than eight feet in height. The applicants received a notice of violation and subsequently retained an architect to obtain a permit to bring the, the carport feature into compliance. In order to do that, though, we are seeking variations to reduce the west side setback, the combined side setback total, the rear setback, and the rear yard open space requirement. There will be two witnesses testifying today. I mean, one of the applicants, Mr. Gull Mohammed, and our project architect, Rizwan Hussain. And with that, I'd ask to call my first witness.
Go ahead.
Gull, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Gull Mohammed. Address is 6051 North Soggin Ash, Chicago, Illinois.
And you and your father own the subject property located again at 6051 North Soggin Ash?
Yes, that is correct.
And as I described it, it's an irregularly shaped lot?
Yes, yes.
And it's improved with a two-story, two-unit building and a detached garage, correct?
Yes.
But back in 2022, you constructed a carport on the west side of the garage so that you could have a third covered parking space at the rear of the lot, right?
Yes.
And after the work was complete, you learned a permit would have been required because the carport is more than eight feet in height.
Correct.
And that's even though it's open on three sides.
Yes.
In order to obtain that permit and to bring the carport into compliance, you then retained an architect?
Yes.
And you learned that variations were required because of the shape of the lot and the location of the carport on the lot. Is that right?
Yes.
And provided the board approves the relief, you and your father intend to continue to live in the two units at the property?
Yes, sir.
So you're going through this process to add a third covered parking space for your own use and not exclusively for financial gain of some, some kind, right?
That is correct, yep.
And in fact, the alternative of taking down the existing garage and carport to build a new three-car garage is unfortunately just outside of our budget.
Correct.
And Gull, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Chairman, my next witness is the architect, Mr. Rizwan Hussain. Rizwan, can you state your name and address for the record?
Rizwan Hussain, 7056 North Keeler Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you are a member of the Lincolnwood Zoning Board of Appeals, is that right?
Yes, I am.
You have also previously testified as an architect of record before this board, correct?
Yes, I have.
And your office prepared the plans to bring the existing carport feature located at the rear of the subject lot into full compliance with the ordinance. Is that right?
That is correct.
And again, in order to permit the project, variations are needed because of the lot's irregular and narrowing dimensions and the footprint of the existing two-car garage.
Yes.
Now, with respect to the side setback relief, it allows the carport to occupy the 10-foot wide space on the west side at the rear of the property, correct?
Yes.
And the combined side setback reduction is really a function of reducing the west side setback.
Correct.
And the rear setback reduction is also needed to account for the footprint of the, the carport feature.
Correct.
And the rear and open space reduction, again, is a function of the reduced rear setback.
Correct.
So all of the relief essentially layers on, on the other. But so we're clear, neither the footprint of the two-unit principal building nor the two-car garage will change, correct?
Will not change.
So the rear two-unit building will remain setback approximately 39 feet from the rear property line?
Yes.
And the grade level open space between the rear of the building and the detached garage will also remain without change?
Yes.
And Rizwan, is your professional opinion that the detached garage and carport will be consistent and compatible with the off-street parking features supporting many of the other neighboring residential buildings in the immediate area?
Yes.
Is it also your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. Be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the project.
So this, this lot is a, is bigger than a standard lot, right? So how, how is the irregular shape of the lot causing the hardship?
So the regular shape of the lot, as you can see from the survey, it narrows toward the rear of the property. So the footprint of the two-car garage is where, is limited. We don't have the 50 feet that we would at the front. If we had 50 feet at the front, frankly, we'd be able to have a three-car garage without any relief. It would be a permitted use. As we stated, taking down the existing garage that was inherited when the client purchased the property to replace it with a new garage is cost prohibitive. So the thought was to add this carport feature. Again, the narrowing lot limits where you can put another parking space on site. And I would also point out that 10-foot wide space on the west side of the lot on its own is a code-compliant slab, quote-unquote slab parking space. So the, the idea here was to cover the slab with the, the carport feature. But again, had the lot been a rectangle, we would have another, call it 13 and a half feet of lot width, and we wouldn't have encroachments on either side. We, we would have more, more options. We unfortunately don't have any other options because of the way the lot narrows toward the rear.
But we're just, we're, we're bringing something into, trying to bring something into compliance that was built without permits, is that correct?
It is. And what I would say is if the client made the mistake of not getting a permit, the understanding of the contractor was that because it's open on three sides, a permit wasn't required. As soon as the client talked to his architect, the architect was like, absolutely not. You need a permit. It's, it's a structure more than eight feet in height. You need to bring this into compliance. At about that same time, the city noted, issued the notice of violation.
Which came first?
The notice of violation. Contractor did the work, notice of violation. They said, wait a second, we thought we had a, we didn't need a permit for this. They went to the architect and the architect said, no, you absolutely do. So it's a, it's a, it's a, you're right, it's remedying an issue. That said, the footprint of the garage on the narrowing lot would still have required variations if we brought it proactively. And for that reason, we don't believe this is a self-created hardship. Did we compound the hardship or make it more worse than it was? Yes. But if we were starting from scratch and wanted to put a carport on the west side of the garage, we'd be in front of the board asking for the same relief because of the narrowing lot and the footprint of the garage on that narrowing lot.
That'd be a better posture for the case to be in, you'd agree, right?
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. But I do want to make it clear that the, the simple fact that he did it without, without the permit, while it's a factor you consider, there still are separate, unique hardships specific to the lot that would, that would allow or justify the variation being granted.
Have you had any conversations with your neighbors?
If, I'm sorry, that was one other. So we did reach out to our neighbors. One of the things you can see from the side view of the carport is that it's slanted toward our west side. The neighbors have no opposition to what's being proposed. They did ask on the west side that we incorporate a gutter so that the water runs off and we control that. We, and that part of our permit application is to do just that. So part of our, in addition to bringing it into compliance, we hope to improve that condition by controlling the water on the west edge of the carport, so it's not spilling off onto the neighbor.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 28724S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the non-accessory, non-required parking lot with 54 off-street parking spaces at 800 West Kinsey, provided one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Parking in Chicago LLC. provided one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Parking in Chicago LLC. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated July eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four, prepared by Amstetter Architects, except as amended by the following condition. And three, prior to issuance of any building permits, applicant provides updated plans showing a fence or curb along the property line adjacent to parking space twenty-seven to prevent any potential parking in that area. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. O'Brien's expertise. Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you again for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Parking in Chicago LLC. The applicant has a lease for the use of the subject property located at eight hundred West Kinsey Street. The property is actually owned by the Illinois Department of Transportation. It consists of an irregularly shaped lot that contains approximately twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten square feet of total area. In two thousand and sixteen, the lot was established and licensed as a non-accessory parking lot. Chairman, uh, our findings included a copy of the previously approved DPD site plan as well as the prior business license for an operator separate from the applicant. Um, that prior operator, though, ceased to operating the lot during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and allowed that license to lapse. The, uh, applicant is now seeking to re-establish the non-accessory parking lot. And in order to do that, she's seeking a special use because the subject property is located in an M-two-dash-three zoning district. Um, we have two primary witnesses available to testify, testify today. Uh, uh, the, uh, president of the applicant, Ms. Laura Summerfeld, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. Uh, our project architect, uh, Mark Amstetter is also available, should there be any questions specific to the layout. Uh, and Chairman, I do have one quick housekeeping item, um, and I just want to rectify that with a letter of recommendation. Based on the plan review process with DPD, the total number of parking spaces was reduced to fifty-four. And, um, and that's in order to meet, to meet onsite landscaping as well as aisle width requirements onsite. Um, the current fifty-four space total is reflected in the plan set that I believe, uh, staff is recommending approval for. So it just reconciles the changes we made through the process.
Okay. And let me just get, uh, DPD's, uh, input on this, just to make sure we're clear. Nancy Radzovich, could you state your name and role, please?
Yes, um, Nancy Radzovich, Assistant Commissioner for the Zoning Bureau in the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Um, the, uh, explanation that Counselor Fatikas just gave, is that accurate?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, with that, Chairman, I can call my first witness.
Please do.
Uh, Laura, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Laura Sum- Summerfeld, fifty-three West Jackson Boulevard, Suite ten fifty-seven, Chicago, six oh six oh four.
And you are the manager of the applicant, Parking in Chicago LLC?
Yes.
And as I stated, you're seeking a special use to re-establish the subject property at eight hundred West Kinsey as a non-accessory, uh, surface parking lot, is that right?
Yes.
Now, in terms of operations, uh, parking customers will use apps like Spot Hero or ParkingWiz to make their reservation?
Yes.
And those reservations can be made twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes.
And vehicle ingress and egress of the parking lot will come from the existing driveway on West Kinsey, is that right?
Yes.
And given the unique site location and the irregular lot shape, um, that's actually the only point of vehicle ingress and egress for the subject site.
Yes.
And although you don't plan on having, uh, any employees onsite, uh, you will be maintaining five security cameras?
Yes.
And, uh, you've committed to link one of those cameras to the police department system, is that right?
Yes.
Um, so the lot will be under constant surveillance, again, at all times.
Yes.
And as part of this review process, is it true that we met with the neighbors of River West and nearby residents?
Yes.
And based on that meeting and the commitment to maintain security cameras and link one of them to the police department system, uh, we believe we have their support to proceed today.
Yes.
And Laura, is it your understanding that my office filed, uh, witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Uh, Terry, can you please state your name and address for the record?
B-R-I-E-N, Maintain Office at twenty-five seventy-four Fairford, and that's in Northbrook, Illinois.
And Terry, um, you are familiar with the subject property?
Yes, sir.
And the scope of your assignment was to evaluate whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct.
You physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
On two occasions, one in February, and then on the way down this morning, I inspected it again.
And, um, based on those inspections, you believe the proposed non-accessory surface parking lot meets all of the approval criteria for special use?
My professional opinion, it does meet all the criteria. It's in keeping with the character of the area. It has been utilized for parking purposes in the past. It's in close proximity to the Fulton Market, where there is definitely a need for parking, especially in the evening.
And Terry, uh, you have prepared a written report detailing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, your understanding that my office submitted a copy of the report to the board?
Yes.
And if you were to con- uh, continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
That's correct, yes.
Great. Uh, Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Question should have been, how soon can it be opened? Jesus.
Right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, my name for the record is Tom Moore, and will you tell the board who you are?
Uh, Camille Kowalkowski.
And you and your brother have a small, um, company that, uh, takes older buildings and renovates them, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've been doing that for several years? And, uh, like a lot of, uh, people in your situation, you, you went by this, uh, building and you saw a house that, uh, needed work and was for sale, and you saw a vacant lot, what appeared to be a vacant lot next to it. And you thought you could renovate the house and build another house on the vacant lot, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
A twofer.
Pardon me?
A twofer.
A twofer. But, but you found out that because it's a vacant lot, doesn't mean it's a buildable lot, is that right?
Correct.
And that's because, uh, when you split the rule, you, you have been educated to find out, when you split a lot, both sides of the lot have to come into compliance and be able to, uh, be compliant on their own, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so when you split this lot, uh, the, the house, so we have two cases, one is the house that you're gonna renovate, and, uh, we're asking for a front yard setback on that, relief on that. And that's because the house on the other side of it, not the vacant lot, but the other side of it, is built. It's non-conforming, it's built on the back of the lot, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And since the front yard, uh, setback is determined by the average of the two lots on either side, the fact that it's built on the back skews that calculate, that mathematical calc- calculation, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
But actually, the, the, the house is lined up with the other houses on the block in terms of, of its setback, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then with regard to the, uh, the house you're going to build, uh, we need relief on the side yard because even though you'll have setbacks when you split the lot, uh, and now you have, the, the combined setback, uh, is a few inches short, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, um, it will still have the normal setbacks, but its combined setback, when you add the two together, because you had a bigger lot before, now you have half of, half the lot. So we need relief there as well, is that right?
Right.
And, um, you and, and you're otherwise going to build this to, both buildings totally decode, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, you and I worked out an affidavit where if you were, continue to testify, you can testify consistently with the affidavit we filed, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, the gentleman to your right, uh, you are the brother, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. John Kowalkowski.
Anything you need to add to your brother's, uh, testimony?
Uh, no.
Okay. The gentleman to his right, will you tell us who you are?
Samuel Pavlovich, Architecture, uh, Architect of Record, Pavlovich Architecture, Inc., two one three, uh, West Institute Place, Suite four oh one.
And you've appeared in front of this board before, is that right?
Yes, I have.
And, uh, you heard your client describe in layman's term the hardships, um, the practical difficulties and the reason we're here for variances. Uh, do you agree with those are the reasons that, but when you were, um, filing these plans, you got corrections and you asked for a denial to get this relief?
That is correct.
And, uh, you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with your affidavit?
Yes, I would.
That's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, one, do I have it right that after the lot is split, both of the remaining lots will be, um, standard size or slightly bigger, is that right?
If I'm, um, they will actually be slightly larger. Uh, the entire block, with the exception of, I believe, the one on the far north corner, they're all actually twenty-eight-foot wide lots.
Yep, by one twenty-six.
Uh, twenty-eight, I, I believe, one twenty-six, yeah.
Okay, and then both of the remaining lots will be that size?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Uh, yeah, my name is Stephen Stapleton, um.
And you're the owner of this property?
Uh, that's correct.
And, uh, who else lives there with you?
Uh, Sarah Van Valkenburg, my, uh, girlfriend and partner.
And, uh, both you and Sarah grew up in California?
That's correct.
But you saw fit to, uh, stake your claim here, is that right?
Yeah, moved here in two thousand and seventeen.
And you bought, uh, this building that we're talking about?
Yep, our first home.
And you lived in, in one of the two units in it, is that right?
Uh, that's correct.
But you've learned that there's enough room in the attic to add a unit, is that right?
That's correct.
And so, um, that's what you hope to do, you're gonna move up there. And so you can rent out the, uh, unit you've been living in. It'll be relatively affordable, and, but it'll help you pay the mortgage and the taxes, is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, uh, you've learned now that, uh, in order to, uh, make the attic a livable space, um, this building is more than fifty years old and the code allows, has an incentive to renovate old buildings and it, uh, you can get up to fifteen percent, uh, additional, is that right?
That's correct.
And you're just using that to square off the roof, so you have more headroom and more roomed. And, and also, it turns out that sometime, we don't know, in the distant past, uh, there was a dormer put in there and at least the city doesn't have any, uh, uh, evidence of a, uh, permit at the time, so that's included in your fifteen percent, is that right?
That's correct.
So your understanding is, if the board sees fit to grant these variances, uh, your, um, property will then be fully, uh, compliant with the current code, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you, uh, addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief. And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Correct.
Lady to your right, will you tell us who you are?
Uh, Sarah Van Valkenburg.
And Sarah, other than, uh, enjoying the snow in the winter, uh, do you have anything to add to your husband's testimony?
No.
Um, and the gentleman to her right, will you tell us who you are?
John Pimentel with PNPC Architects.
And you're the project manager, is that right?
That's correct.
And you've testified in front of this board many times.
Correct.
And, uh, would you briefly describe the, the practical difficulties and the hardship in making this plan that, that causes us to need relief?
Uh, well, one of the reasons why we need the variances for the square footage, uh, since there was a dormer there that was built already, in order for us to get the approval, we have to bring that up to compliance. Um, and the square footage is one of the reasons why we're a little low on that. And also, the height of the dormer that's there does not meet, uh, the requirement. So again, we're asking for the height relief, uh, for this property as well.
And if the board sees fit to grant this, then the, the building will be totally in compliance, is that right? And you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, uh, relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
That's right.
That's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are? And Michael, you're the owner of this property, is that right? And what year did you buy it?
Two thousand and four.
And at that time, you had, uh, all the, uh, usual advisors and as far as you were told, it was in total compliance, is that right?
That's correct.
And for, uh, most of that time, you had one renter, is that right?
Seventeen years.
And, uh, then the renter moved on, their life moved on. And so you, uh, started exploring, um, maybe you could do, uh, interim, uh, VBRO rentals or something. And, uh, when you went to the city, you found out, uh, a couple of things. One, that, that they thought it was a two-flat.
That's correct.
And secondly, that, uh, there were, there was an addition, you know, sometime before seventeen years ago, you don't know how long ago, but, um, i- in the back, that actually matches an addition next door. Um, and so, um, we're now getting the variance that would have been required seventeen or more years ago, is that right?
That is all correct.
And it's for the common, uh, a wall, uh, that matches the building next door that also, both in the building itself and both of them have additions, and, uh, they're both on the lot line, is that right?
That's correct.
And so, um, if, uh, the board sees fit, uh, it's your understanding, then, uh, this will be totally in compliance and you'll be able to rent it hopefully, uh, to another seventeen-year, minute.
That, that's my understanding and hope.
Um, and you and I addressed a, a, uh, a witness statement where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, I would.
And sir, will you tell us who you are?
Matty Cooper, it's a K-Two Studio Principal.
And you're, uh, an architect and you were asked by, um, Mr. Moynihan to, uh, do as-built drawings to, um, bring, uh, to bring the property totally into compliance, is that right?
Correct.
And, uh, you've done that and you got this one, uh, correction for which you asked for a denial. Uh, and it has to do with the common wall, uh, that is on the lot line and been on the lot line since the eighteen nineties or something, whenever this building was built, is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, it also includes an addition in the back, but following the exact same wall, is that right?
Correct.
And it's your opinion, if the, uh, board grants this variance, that the property will then be in full compliance, is that right?
That's also correct.
And, um, you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
I would, yes.
Uh, that's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you. We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, you can proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Welcome to the board. Uh, my name is John Pikarsky. I'm an attorney, uh, with offices at 55 West Monroe Street. And, uh, this morning I represent Arsalan Hamidi, who's seated to my right, uh, who is the o- owner of the property in question. Mr. Hamidi, uh, purchased the, uh, property, which has, uh, a four-dwelling unit building on it to the north, whi- which is a lot of record, and, uh, a vacant lot to the south. We are seeking to be allowed to develop the vacant lot, uh, with a three-dwelling unit building providing three onsite parking spaces. Uh, the property has been rezoned for the purposes. We have gone through the, uh, Wrightwood Neighbors, uh, Community Association. In fact, the chairman of the Wrightwood Neighbors lives down the street from this site. Um, we are seeking, uh, variations because, uh, the property is, uh, 26 frontage feet by 75 feet of depth and it backs onto the L tracks. So, uh, it's a, it's a very difficult, uh, property to work with. Uh, we are seeking to reduce the open space. Uh, we are seeking, uh, a front yard variation. We are seeking a rear yard variation and we are seeking a north yard variation. Um, with that, uh, I would, uh, call, uh, John Hannah, uh, our architect. please state your name, address, and occupation, sir?
Uh, John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., 180 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
Mr. Hannah, I, I think we should agree that this is a very difficult, uh, piece of property to deal with.
Uh, it was. Sure.
And you're providing three, uh, indoor parking spaces at the first level at the subject site?
Uh, that's correct.
And, uh, the property will be improved with a, um, three-dwelling unit building, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Um, in order to accomplish this, we need a, uh, rear yard open space, uh, uh, reduction. We need a front yard reduction from the required nine feet to 4.58 feet. Uh, a required rear yard reduction from 22 feet to one and a north side yard, uh, reduction from, uh, 2.6 feet to one, is that correct?
That's all correct, yes.
And, uh, now you've been an architect for several years now, I, I take it?
Uh, a few, yeah.
Uh, we've known each other for 30, 35 years. Uh, so, um, Mr. Hannah, it, are you familiar with the criteria for the, um, granting of relief, uh, that is being sought?
I am.
Would your, in your opinion, would the, um, granting of the relief sought in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Uh, it wouldn't. Uh, we've worked very hard to make this building consistent with the rest of the block, which is a very special block.
And in your opinion, would it in any way injure surrounding property values?
Uh, not, not at all.
In fact, the opposite is true.
I'm pretty sure.
Let me jump in here real quick. Uh, Mr. Hannah, you prepared an affidavit, is that correct?
I did.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with that affidavit?
I would.
All right, and Mr. Hamidi, uh, you prepared an affidavit as well, is that correct?
Uh, I don't think so.
Yes.
Oh, I did?
Or you signed an affidavit. You may have not prepared it, but you reviewed it and signed it, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with that affidavit?
That's correct, yes.
All right, are there any questions from the board? We'll, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we take that case, I move that we take a short five-minute recess. Uh, Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner McDonald, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in recess for five minutes.
The Bleep is, I'm way over.
Oh, oh.
You know him or not?
All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Uh, we are now on calendar numbers 29524S and 29624Z. Uh, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 29524S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with a new convenience store provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Minhas Lakani, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July 17, 2024, all prepared by Ericson Architecture. Would everyone planning to testify? Uh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Um, Ryan's expertise. Uh, let me just, um, start by saying, sir, you're hearing objection, is that correct? Okay, uh, just so you, you know, the process that we're about to go through, um, we're going to start with the applicant, they'll put on their case. Then we will go to you. You'll have, uh, an opportunity to both state your objection and also ask questions of any of the applicant's witnesses, if you wish. Um, and then once, uh, you've done that, we will go back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing. Okay? Do you have a question?
Well, I have, um, uh, admissions of, uh, documents and petitions and pictures of the site. Will I be able to present those?
You'll be able to present that, uh, when we, when we come to you after the applicant puts on their case in chief.
Very well.
Thank you. All right, uh, with that, Counselor Pikarsky, uh, please proceed. Give us one second, Counselor, while we try and, uh, get the mic. All right, now try with the mic.
Testing.
There we go. We got it.
I represent Mr. and Mrs. Minhas Lakani, who are seated to my right. Uh, I have also with me today, uh, our architect, Eric Erickson, and, uh, our real estate appraiser, uh, Mr. Joseph Ryan. Uh, the, uh, property in question is located at 7138 North Sheridan. It's the southwest corner of Sheridan and Tui. I can't think of a more urban location. Uh, I've been there a million times, uh, we all have. I think anybody who's driven north on Sheridan Road knows this site. Um, as I said, it's the southwest corner of Sheridan and Tui. It contains 19,276 square feet, uh, which, uh, gives us, uh, the requirement of having a, uh, variation, uh, since the ordinance requires, uh, 20,000 square feet. This is a 4% of variation. Um, the subject site has been improved, uh, with a, a gas station and, uh, C-store, mini-mark, whatever you want to call it, uh, since, uh, 1989. Um, Mr. Lakani, uh, in 1989 began leasing the property, uh, and has been operating it ever since. Uh, in, uh, 1995, he actually purchased the property. Uh, it is, uh, tired, uh, shall we say, at this point. Uh, it does not meet the market standards, uh, for, uh, a C-store and, uh, gas station. Uh, Mr. Lakani is, uh, prepared to spend over a million dollars to completely, uh, remove and renovate, uh, the entire operation. Uh, we have, uh, worked with the, uh, local alderman, uh, in order to rezone this property to the B3-2 standards of the, of the zoning ordinance. Uh, and, uh, we are now here for the special use for the gas station uh, and the variation, uh, for the mini-mark. Uh, for the lot area, I'm sorry. Uh, the property has, uh, 135 frontage feet on Sheridan, 150 frontage feet on Tui, uh, 150 frontage, uh, feet on the south, which is adjacent to an alley, and then 135 feet, uh, on the west. It's an irregular shape. If you're, uh, an architectural type, it's called a trapezoidal, uh, uh, lot. Um, the, uh, property has been, uh, improved with a convenience store and a gas station since 1989. Uh, it is, uh, the client currently, uh, operates with, uh, four, uh, full-time employees and it is currently, uh, and historically been open 24 hours a day, seven days per week. Uh, it will provide over 2,900 square feet of landscaping, new landscaping, and, uh, seven onsite parking spaces. So it's a, a complete rehab and a complete restructuring, uh, to make it infinitely more efficient, uh, and to, uh, beautify the area and, and, and to, uh, make it comply with current market standards. So with that, I would call, uh, my client, uh, Mr. Minhas Lakani. Please state, state your name.
Hey, my name is Minhas Lakani and I'm the owner of the property.
Now, i- is, is it true that you leased, began leasing this property in 1989?
Yes, sir.
And at that time, uh, was the, uh, operation a 24-hour operation?
Yes, sir.
And did it have a, uh, a, a mini-mark, uh, of sorts, uh, at that location?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is it true that in 1995, you purchased the property?
Yes, I do.
And, uh, now you are seeking, uh, to rehab the, the, uh, property? Is that correct? Uh, is it your opinion that the property in its current state does not meet the, uh, market standards, uh, that are set for gas stations and mini-marts? Is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Uh, is it also true that, uh, you will, uh, spend in excess of, uh, a million dollars to, uh, remove the existing buildings and pumps, et cetera?
Yeah, everything is new.
So everything will be, be new? And, and you've worked with the city to, uh, correctly, uh, and efficiently design the proposal?
Yes.
Uh, I have no further questions. Uh, I would call, uh, the architect, Mr. Eric Erickson. Please state your name. And how long?
Use that microphone for the court reporter.
Eric Erickson.
And your, uh, occupation?
Architects, Erickson Architecture, LLC.
And how long have you been an architect?
About 40 years.
Nice number. Uh, now, um, you're the project architect for the subject- Now, you're the project architect for the subject site, is that correct? Can you briefly describe the proposed changes?
What we have, it's best to describe it from what we have and then what we want to do. They're actually fairly similar. Currently, there's the, the mini mart building, we have six pumps around the building. We have a separate commercial building that has a subway, a small one, that has a subway restaurant in it, along the alley. One of the major reasons for redoing the whole site is that the, the, the way the pumps are laid out is unusual. It's a very old style, you don't find it very often. Four of the pumps are on the corners of the building, which is, makes it just an unusual thing. It's, the approaches are different, and then people, when they position their cars, position their cars in various ways. We would, we would like to redo the site, put in a, a larger mart building, but one against the alley, and then put, and then have just six pumps. So we're going from six pumps to six pumps, we're not necessarily increasing that, but we're designing in a much more standard fashion, much more regular traffic patterns. No more of these, you know, pro, gas, the pumps on the corners of the building, which just asks for trouble accidents, small, low-speed accidents and things like that. Another advantage is that we're, the building is snug up against the alley, which will then act as a substantial visual and sound block for any residential residences to the west. So the building is between the pumps and the, and the residential to the west. So that's an improvement, you know, so we're being better neighbors from that point of view, as far as an activity point of view. And it is, is, is older, it's getting tired. And it'd be nice to have a, everything fresh and new. In addition, we've a substantial increase in the landscaping, as, as is normal in Chicago, so it'll be a lot more attractive. We're also removing one of the driveway accesses off of Sheridan Road, so it's going from two down to one, which is again, an improvement in traffic safety for the whole neighborhood, for, for traffic on, on the two roads and on the site. And the, the traffic patterns are, are smooth on the inside, entering from the, the two corners kind of, traffic in the middle. So we feel it's a substantial improvement.
In your opinion, will the proposal in any way have a negative effect on the community in which it's located?
No, no different from now, actually, probably less, as, as I described briefly in my description.
I have no further questions. Now, I have prepared on your behalf an affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I asked you the questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Correct, yes.
I have no further questions. Mr. Ryan, please. Please state your name, address, and occupation.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Mr. Ryan, had, have you, at my request, examined the subject site and the surrounding environs?
Yes.
And can you please briefly describe the subject site?
Corner location at Sheridan and Tui avenues. It's a nineteen thousand square foot, six-pump gas station. It, it's obsolete in the fact that, as the architect described, the pumps are at the corner of the building. I've appraised over a thousand gas stations, I've only seen that design a couple of times. So the new design would be much more efficient and much more typical of the market, and the C-store would be a certain, certainly an upgrade over what is there presently.
Are you familiar with the standards for a special use as set out in the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, I stated each of the criteria for this board to grant a special use in my report and explained why it meets that criteria.
If I went through each of these standards, would your answer be the same or substantially similar that was located in the report?
It would be. And I also note that the size of nineteen thousand square feet is slightly substandard from the current zoning, which requires twenty thousand square feet. And I listed thirteen other gas stations in the city of Chicago that are currently exist with less than twenty thousand square feet site area.
I have no further questions and no further presentation. I will, of course, reserve rebuttal.
Sure. All right, let's go to the objector. Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Gordon, Gordon J. McGill, twelve zero nine West Bell Merrill, in Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four zero.
All right, and go ahead and tell us why you're hearing objection.
May I present these, these petitions first?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does, does the applicant have one as well, Bradley?
I do.
Okay, great. Okay.
All set? May I proceed?
Yes, please do.
Thanks. My first question is from Mr. Erickson, if I may ask. Mr. Erickson, do you live in the area?
Illinois.
Okay, and then you had just said to the board that this will actually enhance the neighborhood. I wonder if the people that had signed that petition would also agree with you. The petition clearly states that, well, listing our agreement with the heading about the problems that have been experienced by this, in this neighborhood. One, being rodents, two, being noise and crime. Three, just the general occurrence of maintenance and appearance of the site, which is historically, since we're bringing historic matters in, have been pretty substandard for the, I guess, for, since nineteen ninety-five, if you will. Also listed in that petition, there, I noted too, thank you, Mr. Erickson, by the way, I noted also too, that the convenience store is going to include a Dunkin' Donuts as well. And when we had the Subway sandwich shop, we had a problem basically keeping rodents under abatement due to, I guess you could say negligent waste disposal. And I would only think that this would cause further exacerbation of that problem once again. So I would again point out that this would not be a benefit to the neighborhood based on the amount of alley space next to this gas station. It happens that the alley here, involved here is a T-shaped alley, which doesn't really come under these pictures, and has several forty-plus unit buildings up and along these, these alleys. And the rodent problem has been very difficult to keep up with at best. The city is constantly coming through the alley, especially in this location. And you'll note in those pictures I've included in the petition that several of those will show, several of those pictures indicate that there are rat holes in the ground all along the Subway station. And finally, twenty-four hours, a twenty-four hour convenience store, we feel, would only add an extra layer of cause for people to make noise and crime. I didn't bring a witness with me, but you know, there have been, like, actually, Mr. Lakani, can I ask you a question? How many murders have been at, at that site?
Maybe few murders.
All right, at least three. Two have been witnessed by several of our neighbors. So if we're talking, and that was broad daylight, correct, the last few?
That happened in a personal, they live in the same building.
Right, but they were during daylight. So I would have to say that this area, and then additionally adding a second reason, twenty-four hour reason for coming into that center in an area that has already been established as having a high level of, well, deadly violence, would not benefit the neighborhood. And that is one of the reasons why I'm here, for those people that signed that petition. So I, my objection primarily revolves around this twenty-four hour opening of the, of the convenience store. You know, several of these other causes, maybe they could be addressed. I mean, we ourselves actually put poison around that area to maintain some control over the rats. We ourselves pick up several bits of the garbage in that alley ourselves. You know, so, you know, some of that, we can kind of control at the periphery. But the crime issue and the noise issue and the traffic issue and a twenty-four hour situation involving Dunkin' Donuts and a convenience store, it makes it very difficult and a ready strained area for us to keep up with. So again, I'll primarily object to the twenty-four hour presence. There's already a mini mart inside of the gas station. I don't have any objections to improving the gas services that they provide there. It's been, I was born at that building, I was born at thirteen twenty-five Tui, apartment one north. There's been a gas station since nineteen sixty, as far as I recollect. No problems, but, except for the crime lately. And then the added layer of the mini mart within there, fine. But now to add the Dunkin' Donuts, to add a convenience center, to add a twenty-four hour presence, another issue. It's just already enough for the area that we can't bear the strain. Any questions for me?
I have a question. Is the, is the gas station currently operating twenty-four hours?
Yes.
Okay.
You can, they actually testified to that.
Okay, okay. The, the, the murders that, that happened, when are we talking? Are we talking in the last couple of years, or what do we?
You could ask Mr. Lakani that, if you want to give me a continuance, I could bring a witness who actually saw two of them.
No, we're, we're.
And had to testify in court, you know, about them and point out the perpetrator.
Oh, no, we're, we're proceeding today.
I do, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
The proposal for the new, the new site plan, does it include additional remediation measures for the rodent intrusion that exists under the current, the current plan?
I'm sorry, I, I cannot hear.
Does?
One, one second, before we, before we get back to the, to the applicant, I just want to make sure that there's no questions left for the objector. Does anybody have any questions for the objector?
I guess I do have one question. And just, you referred to, I guess, property maintenance generally.
Right.
So if there was a plan around that, I'm just making sure you are clear, that, that goes away if you, if that's addressed?
I mean, first off, I realize too, that I had set that petition up as a zoning and not a variance. So you'll see that the language in the petition doesn't really address properly the focus of this meeting. The maintenance issue, let's call it history, okay? And historically speaking, you go by a track record. We all look at somebody's past history to, when they, when we apply for a job. In application for a zoning hearing, we should also look at that person's history too and see how they've done, how they've maintained the property. And to me, maintenance of the property should mean that people should address garbage, make sure that there are no rodents, which by the way, is a proper thing to do when you operate a restaurant like a Subway or Dunkin' Donuts or even anything that, any location that sells food. There are standards set by the city, they require us to have closed garbage bins and no garbage on the ground. And so that means that the city's oversight on maintenance is, well, you know, is required. That hasn't been really focused or performed that, performed well at all, as evidenced again by what you see in those pictures.
And then my last question. It is currently twenty-four hours in the, I'm trying to figure out why that is now an issue, if it's already twenty-four hours.
Again, you know, you're talking, sorry, did I cut you off?
Say, is it just because they're adding the food?
Well, you're adding another layer of cause, another layer of traffic. Not only will you now have people that are coming in for gasoline, okay? Now you're having people that are coming in for donuts, for coffee, for cigarettes, anything at twelve, at two in the morning or four in the morning. It's been historically already a problem keeping crime out. No matter how much lighting you put in, how many cameras you set up, there's all, there, there's ways around it. People wear hoodies, ski masks, so forth. So there's no passive way of maintaining or preventing a crime. So the only thing you really can do is prevent reasons for congregation. And especially at that, you know, at twenty-four hours between.
So can I just make sure I understand? Your objection is basically to reissuing the special use. You recognize that, that a lot of the things that you're noting aren't really changing. In fact, some of them might be getting better, right? Some of the, the new building, and it looks like there's more storage. And so there seems like there's certain aspects of your objection that are being ameliated. But then the, the other aspects was, as it relates to the hours. And then that's the same, and then the change is, is I hear you're saying, maybe there's a little more traffic from your perspective.
Well, I've actually objected to the whole issue, to tell you the truth. I mean, because when you build something, you have to remember there's responsibility of things that you have to do to prove. So if you're going to build something like this, and you have to realize that the person who's running it is responsible and hasn't been really sensitive to the issues of the community, doesn't exactly engender the confidence that it will be that way henceforth. So yes, I do object to everything in the sense that it will not be an improvement because it'll overall, we have to add the positives and the negatives in this situation.
I know, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, from your perspective, the way that the new plan is worse is what? What, what is the way that the new?
I'll outline it.
The existing plan, you, you have issues with. But in terms of this plan, I, I hear you saying it's worth worse. I just want to make sure I understand specifically what is worse about it.
I could outline it specifically. First off, of course, we begin with traffic, okay? There'll be more noise, more cars with loud mufflers, more lights, more people passing through, more radio play along a very densely populated area. That's number one. Number two, of course, historically, the area, the specific corner has been a crime mag, there's been crime, very, you know, homicidal crime. So number three, the aspect of increasing the types of services and goods that are presented there have been historically well strewn and only been a rat, increased the rat harborage, excuse me. And we're going to only have it worse now that most of the, we'll be having sugar and flour, basically there, you know? And it's disposed, disposable products, the consumable products that are, in the past, been, you know, drawn rodents to the site. So I've addressed crime, I've addressed the sanitation, I've addressed the traffic, and what, I've addressed the noise. And specifically, all that is brought on, if you will, from the core, the core issue. And specifically, all that is brought on, if you will, from the core issue of when you're increasing this type of, you know, self, this corner that's supposed to serve the interest of both convenience store, convenience store and fuel, which the fuel part, I'm not really that concerned about. You basically, only because we've put up with it for so long, I guess I'm sort of used to it. But, or we're used to it. But, you know, you're just exacerbating in a situation that's already shown to be, or already.
How, how close do you live to this gas station?
About three and a half, four miles currently. So again, though, I manage the property. I'm the trustee that owns the property. So I'm, I had been involved in this property literally since I was six months old.
You manage which property?
This, I'm so sorry, the neighbor property at 131725 West Tuie Avenue, which again was inside of the, it's on top of that petition.
Okay.
Sorry.
So you manage the property at 1317 West Tuie?
Correct.
Do you own that property?
Yes.
Any other questions for the objector?
A small minor for applicant.
Okay. Sir, do you have anything further or are we ready to go back to the applicant?
Well, yes, we're ready to go back. But before I do that, I want to say thank you for your questions and thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go back to the applicant. I know we're going to have some questions from the board for the applicant. But why don't we start with the rebuttal from the applicant?
First of all, I'd like to object to any of the testimony about crime. There has been no showing of any relationship between the operation of a gas station at this location and the obviously inflammatory testimony about crime. So I would object and move that it be stricken.
So I'm going to overrule the objection, but the points that you're making will go to the weight of the, of the objection made by the, by the objector.
Secondly, I would indicate that my client has contracted for a minimally monthly inspection for rodent and control of the property as far as rodent control. Secondly, thirdly, my client has indicated to me that he has intent to install 32 cameras on the subject site so as to make certain that anyone entering the subject site is photographed and is aware of the fact that the, they are under scrutiny. Finally, my client has indicated to me that it's absolutely necessary that he be open as far as the convenience store for 24 hours, simply for the safety of the neighborhood. In actuality, the sales after midnight are substantially lower. But a person on site 24 hours a day is a safety issue. And if my client would close, say at midnight, that would leave the place dark and unguarded for any roughly a six to eight hour period, which would be an open invitation to vandalism and to crime. Those are the rebuttals.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, okay. Any questions from the board?
I do have a question, and I think it's for the architect because I think you referenced the design, and I'm, I didn't pull it back up. So I think you referenced the design, the new design, the building being more of a buffer for sound. And I'm unclear, where is the current gas station? Like, how is that, if you can just highlight that again for me, that would be great.
How does it compare to what it's right now?
Yeah.
Currently, currently the site plan, there's, there's two buildings. There's the mini mart, small mini mart building with the pumps all around it. And then there's a, the small restaurant, Subway restaurant on the site plan. They basically, the building doesn't do, go to job of blocking sound and light. Actually headlights from cars at night, which can shine onto the residential properties. In the new design, the building goes along a substantial portion of the alleyway, which will be a sound buffer and a visual light buffer that cars headlights at night cannot shine, you know, through the building, you know, so. If I could make another important safety point also, if I, if I could. This is, the current mart building is, as mentioned before by the appraiser here as well, that it's a very unusual design with the corner, four corner pumps. It's a safety issue. And a lot of my discussions with Chicago Planning and Development Department revolve around overall site safety, pedestrian safety, car safety, everything else. And an odd thing happens that when someone parks on the four corners and then comes in to pay, they can't see their car anymore. Their car is hidden from view from both the cashier and the customer, which gives an opportunity to an enterprising young man or whatever to approach the car and reach into it, maybe unlock the door or steal something or do mayhem, whatever. It's very irritating evidently and dangerous, actually. I mean, someone could jump in the car and be hiding in there when you walk out of the car, out of the mart again. So we'd like to get rid of this condition. And the new design is the standard pump. The cashier will be able to observe all the cars all at once with just a turning to the right of the shoulder. The customer can also turn, you know, turn their head and look and see, yes, my car is still there. No one is going in my car. It's a safety thing. And it's not insubstantial. The second comment I was going to make is, Mr. LaCani, actually in our design process, was very adamant that he wanted to have good waste control. So he actually made me put in two waste areas on this building, one to the north, one to the south. The one to the north would be direct service within six feet of the back door to the food establishment. And the one to the south is likewise just three steps away from the door, you know, leaving the mini mart. So they're nice, well-maintained waste areas, but they're, the important thing is they're very close to the back doors. So it's not going to be inconvenient to take out the trash and deal with it properly. And so it's just, it should lend itself to much better waste control. It's not insignificant at his insistence.
And then my last question, because I live a lot, around a lot of gas stations. So I am sensitive to what you were saying. But my question is, so is your security measure just the cameras? Are there going to be staff, guards or anything like that? Or is it just additional cameras?
Right now, we have like a 16 camera, but we want to, when we do this remodeling, we're going to extend more cameras. We're gonna, I was just talking to him that we're gonna put a few cameras back in the alley too. So it's about going to be 32 cameras and it's going to record in 24 hours, so.
And is somebody staffing and viewing the cameras live? Is it, or is it just recording? If something happens, then?
Recording if something happen and some police or somebody wants it to see it or, you know, they want a copy of it, they can come and get it.
Thank you.
And I got a few always, we've been there for 36 years and we always maintain our property, make sure they pick up the garbage. We do landscaping, landscaping, we do the, you know, the, every month they come for checking the rodents and everything. And she's my wife and also partner, she will tell you about this. Anything we see it, we take her right away.
Yeah, because it's our baby. This place is our baby. This is where we started life 30 years, 36 years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just had a question. Did you all do your own community outreach or have any interaction with the alderman's office?
Yes, we do have connections with the alderman's office and we.
About this, about your proposed zoning creation and special use? And what is, what feedback did you get from the office?
Yeah, they are in full support, I think.
The property has been rezoned for the purposes. And obviously that required aldermanic approval.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I want to thank everyone for their input today. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good weekend.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you may proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kate Duncan. I'm an attorney with offices located at 300 North LaSalle Street. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the applicant 1220 Draper LLC in connection with the application for variations for the property located at 1220 West Draper Street. Present this morning with me is Dr. Neeraj Patel, who is the managing member of 1220 Draper LLC. Dr. Patel and his wife Nicole Porbit are both members of the LLC and have purchased the home to remodel it to live in with their family. Also present this morning is Mr. Gary Barrell from BBA Architecture, who is the architect for this project. Applicant seeking to renovate the existing multifamily home into a single-family home. They're proposing to add some small additions to the home and to replace the two-car garage for the home. They would also like to convert a portion of the attic into finished occupiable space. The property is owned RS3. The existing building was built in approximately 1890 and it has gone through various renovations through the years. And at one point was converted into a multifamily building. The home is on a very irregularly shaped lot, 50 feet by 60.15 feet, which is very different dimensions than a standard city lot. In order to renovate the home in the most efficient way possible, applicant is seeking to accommodate a new rear one-story addition and a new side three-story addition and to replace the two-car garage that will have a new outdoor deck on the top. Applicant and their architect have worked very hard to revitalize the home to meet modern standards while working within the character and history of the existing building as well as working within the constraints of the irregularly shaped lot. Because of the existing conditions of the home and the irregular sized lot, applicant is seeking the following variations to accommodate the proposed renovations. Number one is reduce the required rear yard open space from 225 square feet to zero square feet. Two is to reduce the required east side setback from four feet to zero feet. The west side setback is actually right now at 1.76. We're not touching that side of the building. So the total side combination will be from 10 feet to 1.76 feet. And number three is to allow an increase in, of the existing non-conforming floor area that's been in existence for 50 years by an additional 609 square feet, which totals 4,672.88 square feet. That's an increase of 15%. All other aspects of the project are within the allowable zoning code requirements. So the hardship presented here is that there is an existing historic home that's already in a non-conforming position, along with an irregularly shaped lot that does not need standard city lot dimensions. Applicant did not create these conditions and as stated, they're planning to renovate the home for the comfort of their family and not to make money for the property. The renovations will allow reasonably sized rooms and living space and a two-car garage, which we believe are reasonable expectations for a single-family home in the neighborhood. Along with the findings of fact that were submitted, we included an affidavit from Dr. Patel, who is here today to testify, along with an affidavit from Mr. Barrell, who is also here today to testify. The applicant has reached out to all adjacent neighbors, none of whom had any objections to the proposed additions or to the variations. We have three letters of support, or I guess they really are no objection, from the neighbor on either side of us and the neighbor across the alley to the north, which I have tendered to the staff, but I have extra copies if you need them. And we've also talked to Alderman Wagsback, who did not really weigh in on this, but just asked us to go talk to the neighbors. And so we've done that and informed him that we've done those. And so with that?
With that, I think you can just have them swear to their affidavits and we'll see if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Patel, could you put your name on the record, please?
Yes, first name is Neeraj, N-E-E-R-A-J, last name is Patel, P-A-T-E-L.
And Dr. Patel, have you submitted an affidavit along with the findings of fact to this board?
Yes.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the findings of fact that have been submitted?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And Mr. Barrell, can you please introduce yourself?
Name is Gary Barrell from BBA Architects.
And Mr. Barrell, have you submitted an affidavit along with the findings of fact to this board?
Yes.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the findings of fact and your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. That is the last case of the morning session. So I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in closed session. Okay, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move that we approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 26724Z and 26824Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26924Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 27024Z and 27124Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 27224Z, 27324Z, and 27424Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 27524S. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 27624Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 27924Z and 28024Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 28324Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 28424S. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 28524Z and 28624Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 28724S. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 28824Z and 28924Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald? Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 29024Z and 29124Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 29224Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 29324Z and 29424Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 29524S and 29624Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 29724Z, 29824Z, and 29924Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matters are approved. I move that we recess until 2:00 PM. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in recess until 2:00 PM. I vote yes, we're in recess until 2:00 PM.